Stand for my allegiance. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Addition or deletion?
Yes, so in addition to our pre, thank you, additions are already pre-requested, folks. Ashley Waite has requested to have the floor this evening, as well as Monica Kravitt. And then, one other thing, one individual caught it in your agenda, under old or unfinished business. I had put down, it says, "Library project" through the A and R. It meant to say, "Church project," so that's a change. And I did not get any updates myself between last meeting and this about that. So we might be able to delete it if you didn't, but I added it there. In the event that it needed to continue to be discussed.
I didn't get anything from her either, so. Introduction, is everybody, know everybody? Okay, everybody signed in to the sign-in sheet?
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting? How does everybody feel about the minutes? Didn't see anything out of.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, says Bernard.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? No favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried. Pre-requested appearances. We're going to try and keep these around five minutes to keep the meeting moving on. There's a lot to go on tonight, so. Mary Louie, you're first on the list, please.
So, over the course of several months last fall and winter, the library interviewed thirteen town and community groups, including the select board, thank you, and the planning commission, to determine what mattered most to the community. And this information from the community informed the library's plan for the next four years. We found three common themes that came up most frequently, and we constructed a plan on how the library could help in these three areas. The three areas were a place to gather, activities and events that brought people together, and the lead organization to help town and community groups work together. So I'm here to report progress that we recently made on the last one, how we could help town and community organizations to work together to help the community. That was one of the things that kept coming up in all of our conversations with all of these groups. About 150 people total. So when we made our plan, we included a new library staff member with the title of Community Connector, to work sixteen hours a week, devoting his or her time to connect town and community organizations so they could share information and resources with each other and the community, and help drive community initiatives to completion. So the purpose of the position is to increase all the organization's effectiveness, again, to share resources, to inform the community about events, and also importantly, to attract more people to public service and volunteerism, which we all know we have a shortage of. So the Community Connector will also provide town and community organizations with reference resources, for example, for community services, and also connect them with expertise in economic development, transportation improvements, access to natural areas, and affordable housing. These were things, these were issues that kept coming up when people talked about their aspirations for the community. So we will offer the neutral space of the library as a place to convene for community discussions. We hope to encourage additional leaders to participate in solutions for town improvements and to drive initiatives to completion. So when I came here really, and that's just background. What I really came here to tell you was the good news is that we've raised fourteen thousand dollars in grant funds to hire someone for one year to pilot this idea. Five thousand dollars came from the Lindem Foundation in Grafton. Three thousand dollars came from the Vermont Community Foundation Spark Program. And an additional six thousand dollars came from fund holders at the Vermont Community Foundation. One of the six thousand, a thousand dollars came from an anonymous donor. I don't know who it is. And then we got a five thousand dollar check from the Lyman-Orton Fund. And Lyman-Orton, the Orton family is the family that owns Vermont Country Store. So that was, I didn't apply directly to him at all, but he saw the proposal. And in our thank you note to Lyman, we offered him a tour of the library in Pollet downtown. And he accepted our offer and spent a morning last week with the library staff and board, the town office staff with Don Malcolm, and a couple of business owners. And he said that the reason the proposal, our proposal attracted him is that the library had interviewed so many people to understand what mattered most in our community. And this is what the Orton Foundation does in its Heart and Soul Program, which is now nationwide. They have a staff of people that come into communities and do almost the same thing that the library did, where they really gather information from the people. So we'll be advertising the position in October, and we hope to hire the Community Connector in November. And one of the first assignments will be to organize monthly gatherings with these town and community organization leaders so we can start to have some conversations, like, you know, just go around, first of all, and say what each of us is working on. But at the end of the pilot year, and I'll be supervising the person that gets his job, we're going to measure the success by the number of completed or active collaborative initiatives that serve the aspirations of the community, and also by the number of new leaders who get involved in public service and volunteerism. So I just, I really just came to share some positive news with you about what's happening at the library and our implementation of our plans going really well. And I thank you all again for participating.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. That's very good news. That's great that Al's going in a very great, positive direction. Thank you for your driving force in the Library Committee. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Mary Lou? Thank you. Haley? You're up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us on your agenda. My name is Hallie Vois. I work for Consider Barwell Farm. My family also has been in root work for many, many years. Angela Miller and Russell Glover are with me as well in support of this project that we're proposing for your review. For the past two weeks, I've been working for the Pollet Historical Society Board. We would like to get a historic roadside marker for Consider Barwell, honoring the name and legacy of Consider Steffens Barwell. For those who are aware of Consider Steffens Barwell or not aware, Dorothy Offensen, our local town historian, wrote very extensively about him in pages from my Pollet scrapbook. He, in the eighteen hundreds, he was the original founder of the farm. He was an innovator and entrepreneur, not just in the cheese industry. Consider Barwell is the first cheese factory in the state of Vermont. It's also the first dairy cooperative in the state of Vermont, incorporated in eighteen sixty-five as the West Pollet Dairy Cooperative. There's a lot of history in West Pollet. We feel that it's very important that it gets the respect and the highlight within the state of Vermont for being the first cheese factory and dairy cooperative, since cheese and dairy are so important to the state of Vermont. In addition, he was very integral in the slate industry with his innovative blacksmithing tools. He made very unique axes and tools that greatly benefited the slate industry in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. His tools are collector's items. The Historical Society has his tools. Russell and Angela also have his original tools. And they are permanently exhibited in the Vermont History Museum in Montpelier. So these are very high, highly respected collector's items. And again, if anyone is interested, please go to the Pollet Library or the Historical Society. His history and his contributions to not only West Pollet, but the state of Vermont is found in her book, pages from my Pollet scrapbook. I have some handouts to submit for the board's review. One is a mock-up of the original text that we had put together, that we had liked to put on the marker. The other one is through my discussions of attending two board meetings with the Pollet Historical Society. Our agreed upon text with their review and approval that was over a few weeks. And an email from Robyn Chestnut, I've been working very closely with him. He confirms he will support this project. He will write a letter of support, and he will provide his contact information for the state. So the board would like to review that. What we need for the board within the application to Vermont, I think it's the Historic Preservation Committee, is we need your review and approval of the text within the application. It asks, has your town managers or offices reviewed and approved the text? We would like to put on this board marker. So as I said, the text we would like is the document that I worked with with the Historical Society. Also, in terms of citing towards the marker, Russell knows more, and Angela know more about this. There is a question about, is this on private property or town property? We know there is a right-of-way with West Pollet. So my next step was to follow up the zoning administrator. I know he's going through some health issues, but we would like to, you know, have further guidance from you. And if we need to have someone come out and do a speculation on where we can put it on the property. But as far as our request for you tonight, if you can review that text in follow-up discussions, we would love to include it in our application and submit it to the state.
Where did you have an idea on where you wanted to place that marker?
Yeah, well, I believe the right-of-way for the town is fifty feet, twenty-five feet from the center of the road. We would try and find a location that fits that, is off that fifty feet. It's a bit vague where the center of the road is. We don't have markers down there now. But in front of the barn, I thought would be a good place, the twenty-five feet from the center of the road before the marker. The only other place would be maybe outside the house, depending on the trees. So if you're going to put a marker in, it needs to be somewhere where people can see it.
And available.
We might have to do a bit of proof.
Is there, I've been in Pollet all my life, but I don't remember. Is there a place where vehicles pull off the highway to where the?
We have a car park in front of the barn that is used for parking. There's probably ten or twelve cars there every day. If it was inside there, you wouldn't really see it when you're driving by. You don't really need, you know, it's, it's a historical marker for people traveling by, really. It's, we'd like to, people to see what's there and maybe stop sometimes.
That picket fence that's around that parking area, would outside of that be within the right-of-way?
I don't think so, no. We'd like it to be outside the fence, on the roadside.
I think that would be a great spot.
Yeah, yeah. We have a sign out there when we're open, there's a sign.
If it's on the road's edge, people are going to stop and travel a portion of the highway to look at it or take pictures of it or something. I just don't think that's a safe.
All the rest of them, all the rest of them are all up through the valley everywhere else or right close to the?
Well, but that one by Roger Leach is.
Has a pull-off.
Has a pull-on.
Do we, but there is, there is places in front of their barn where they could stop and get off the road. Would we need to talk to the state, or as long as it's beyond the, beyond that right-of-way? It's, it can be placed anywhere they want to on their property. So you would just need some help determining where the edge of the right-of-way is?
We do have a car park, so it's open to the public. Three weeks or so ago, we had the Washington County Cheese Tour. We had six hundred visitors. They parked off the road on the edges. There were no problems. I don't expect six hundred people to come by and look at the historic marker. You know, maybe one a week, so. And they can certainly pull into the car park. And the car park is marked, car park.
So if we had Keith go down and evaluate that. See, right, right now, we do not have a zoning administrator at this point. We're working on getting one, and hopefully we'll have one within a week or two.
Well, the thing about how.
Keith may be able to determine where the, where the right-of-way is.
What Haley was asking was for the text to be approved, and obviously, the next day would be.
That would be the next day, okay.
After that's approved.
How soon are you looking for the text to be approved, by next meeting, or?
Whatever is convenient for you. I don't think that there is time between now and the end of the year to do any type of, you know, that application go through. Obviously, the state, I'm sure, has a lot of bureaucracy, and it takes time for these things and to get the thing done. So, I mean, if anything, it'd be nice to have sort of like a spring ceremony celebration of 2020. If you are able to review the text by next meeting, that would be great. But, you know, as it's getting colder, and there's, I mean, there's no next meeting.
Next meeting.
I was going to say next meeting. Okay, next meeting done.
We can, we can review that and make a decision on the next meeting, wouldn't you say, John?
Yes.
Great.
Fine. Do you have anything else to add, or?
We're just, you know, very grateful for the town's consideration. As I said, when Angela and Russell purchased the property and when they learned about the history of Consider Steffens Barwell, this is the reason why they have this cheese operation today. And it's award-winning, we're internationally, nationally recognized. We win highly prestigious competitions. Our cheese is featured in all over this country, in markets, in Michelin-starred restaurants. So it's not only about us, it's really honoring the legacy of Consider Barwell, who laid the foundation for Angela and Russell to make it as what it is today. It's really to honor his spirit and his contributions to West Pollet and the state.
Great. Well, thank you. Doris?
Do historic signs reside on public or private land? Just a curiosity.
Can be either. Thank you.
Public and private.
On private?
It can be both.
It can be both. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but if Keith feels it's both. I mean, right, it doesn't always, historic events didn't always happen on publicly, and so.
I was just curious about the ones I've seen.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's really representative. In September, we've had multiple historic, all of things.
Very good. So we'll, we'll have a, a answer for you at the next meeting. I don't see any problem with it, but we'll all review it and.
Hi, I was emailing with you, so I can, if you are not able to make it to the next meeting, I'll add it to the agenda for old business to be discussed. And if you're not able to be here, I can email you too with any sort of.
So that should be the eighth of October.
Yes.
Ashley?
Oh, I'm here to check on the status.
I had the information from Merrill, and I didn't reach out to her today. I was looking for, I should have got an update, but I didn't. I can tell you what the last, my last conversation with her was. According to what she said, that the Purhams has appealed. So there'll need to be another hearing set.
Appealed to where?
Apparently to the, to the Environmental Court. They have appealed the hearing.
If you remember the decision on May eighth, where I appealed to the Environmental Court, their decision was that they had no jurisdiction. It's all pre-existed, the Environmental Court and the DRB. That was their decision, May eighth.
So she did not say who exactly it appealed to. She said, Mr. Purhams' lawyer.
Is she aware of the previous decision from the?
Has included legal arguments in connection with the appeal. So that's, that's where it stands. And I, they've, they've appealed, they've gone. And I don't, I don't know anything about the legal side of it, but I will reach out to her and find out exactly where, how that works.
You realize how ridiculous this is? This is, this is totally ridiculous. May eighth, I was in here before you, the board,
Right.
with the Environmental Court's decision that says they have no jurisdiction. You asked me to wait a week because you wanted to talk to Merrill and have her look at it
Right.
before you took any action. This all develops because the SWAT board did not follow their previous action when they had the previous zoning administrator go with John Thrasher to have him write a letter, which he failed to do. This, this is getting ridiculous. But even May eighth, you asked for a week, a week to have your lawyer look at it. She was going to look right at it a week, within the week. This is four months later, and now we're going back to the court again? He has no permit. I don't, nobody don't understand that. He did not build the building where the permit stated. He has no permit to have that built in there. Cut and dried, simple, read the regulations. It's very simple. I don't know why you can't follow up on your decision. This is the second time? This is utterly unacceptable.
Now, I, I see your frustrations, but I know that I can't make decisions without the legal aid. And I'm relying on the legal aid to get us through this so that we have something that doesn't fall back on us. And all I can do is keep pushing her.
The board can't make a decision?
The board?
And follow up.
I can tell you what I'm going to do, but I'm not, I can't speak for the rest of the board. But I know that I won't, I won't endorse anything without her stamp of approval on it.
Well, I thought that's where it was going before, when you asked to.
That's what I thought. We wrote, we wrote them the letter that they were in violation. But apparently, the, the actual content of that letter says that they do have the right to appeal.
How, the previous zoning administrator stated that he did. But that wasn't up to him to tell them they had the right to appeal and to who to appeal it to. He stepped over the boundary line. He stepped over the fence when he telling them who to appeal. It's up to them to decide if they need to appeal or not. Not up to him to tell them to appeal. And I read that, that letter, and then basically, he told them to, to appeal it.
Alls I can talk about, comment on is the current letter that, that was just sent out. And I don't have a copy of that right now on me.
And neither do I. And I've asked to be privy to all this and have copy sent to me. And so far, I've been totally ignored in this whole process, all the way through. So anytime I get any information, I come down here and see if it's on the bulletin board. And I've asked to have copy sent to me of all, all communications and going, and nothing comes to me.
Who has assigned postal certified mail that got mailed?
It should come, it should come back to Debbie when it, when it circulates through. I would say that they put, I, well, I don't know that because I don't know what address was on the certified receipt. Whoever signed the certified receipt.
Only reason I'm asking that, because I knew that we put a ten-day limit
Right.
on that. So it'd be nice to know when he received it, to find out if we ever got a letter in that ten-day timeframe from his new attorney.
And I, I do not know that.
Need to find that out.
That conversation that I had with her, that was the email that I got on.
Yeah, but that has no bearing, because we don't know when it got mailed and when it got received, like.
That was, I believe it made, I don't know if it was last Wednesday or two Wednesdays ago. It just says Wednesday, it doesn't say the day.
Well, we, well, probably needs to be listed under, talked about under all business, but I mean, I just don't want to see it keep dragging on.
No, it needs to be dealt with. And I, I thought we were in a direction for it to be dealt with. And I, I assumed that we would have more information by now, but unfortunately, I did not follow up with her this week.
Is she aware of the original Environmental Court?
She had all the information from, from the beginning.
Doesn't sound like she, she's following an Environmental Court's decision either. I'm sure, I'm, I question whether she's got it or not, or whether she's even read it.
Well, she wrote, she wrote the letter that he was in violation, and he had.
She wrote that letter that was sent to?
To Cameron, yes. So we'll, can you make a reminder for me so we can talk tomorrow about and, and follow through on this and get accurate information and supply Ashley with accurate information? What's the best way to get that information to you?
You can email it to me as well.
Okay. Can you give Kristen your email address?
Yeah.
And, and we will explain to, to Merrill that, that we need, we need a response for you. So I will, we will, we'll start right on that tomorrow morning and.
This is very discouraging, to be twice, and now we're going to head to the third time? Three times you're out, or what's going on here? You just keep battling it till you win, or till the other party gives up? It's ridiculous.
Now, I understand your frustrations, and I can see it, but I don't understand all the ins and outs of the legal world, and.
The legal world, from, from May eighth, the Environmental Court's decision, which wasn't cheap going there, I'll tell you that.
Right.
Their decision was that it goes back to the, to the town board. It went back to the Board of SWATmen. They're the ones that made the original decision. It goes back to them for them to enforce. And that's what I command, and we talked the first meeting after that decision.
I will have more information and share it with you as soon as it becomes available. That's, that's all I'll tell you right now, so. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Ashley?
Is that her name, Merrill?
Merrill Bent at Wilmington, what is it, Campbell?
Wilmington Benton Campbell. Wilmington Benton Campbell.
You don't have any objection if I call her?
You can call her. I don't know what she'll give you for information, but, or you can have your lawyer reach out to her too, or. I, I can't say what she'll give you for information. We will, I'll make sure that I get some information for you as soon as possible. Well, I will stay aggressively asking for information to give to you as soon as possible.
So he should have the information well before our next meeting on the eighth?
Right. I mean, we, we will, there's, there's needs. I can't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to have information before this week's over. It may take her a day to pull it all together, but we should have.
Very curious on what basis they're appealing it.
Well, exactly. So we don't know that and, and how, and what angle their, his lawyer is going at, so. And that's, needs to be, needs to be brought up, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica?
Hi, I'm here to follow up on the seventeen seventy seven Pollock Expedition Monument over at the Williams Schoolhouse. The last meeting, we were going to find out if Highway Department, Keith Mason would look at it, see if he could scoop it up and move it over to the town and agree. And, uh, at very Minart, I spoke with him, unfortunately, he couldn't come to the meeting tonight. But he wanted me to follow through on the placement we decided, or we're looking at. Cause there was concerns about should it be becoming a monument, a valet monument, as things going on next. So if you, the placement, we thought would be good, next to the Veterans Monument, we have the bell, Veterans Monument. And the seventeen seventy seven monument would be just the opposite side of the bell. Maybe fanned out like a view, so as you come up the ramp on the west side of the, or east side of three, people can come right up and they'll see both monuments at the same time. Maybe put a plank over the bell, or better yet, change the position of the flagpole. Then we wouldn't have so much chaotic pieces going around there. And the other thought, I'm, I'm going a little further, but you know, the other thought is the town hall monument on that very high post that nobody can see. And very recent, and a historical society, that it should possibly be put on either side of this building. So then you will have, you'll have a clearer look there. But I'm gonna give Keith Mason and his thoughts on how to move this. He took a look at it this afternoon.
He had a chance to look at it?
Yeah. Comes with no guarantees. It may be able to move it whole and it may come apart. The concrete is crumbling, and it looks like a very large footing, four foot square, I don't know how deep. And then the rock that the plaque is on is set on that with another layer of concrete to establish a base for that. So the rock with the plaque on it is probably the valuable part of the whole thing, and perhaps we would need to make a new base over here, or go in an alternative way. I mean, we might be able to dig around it, pick it up with a fork, be able to move it, I don't know, but it is. You're gonna have to expose it and see what, what you can't see now.
Right.
The low ground level and.
So it could turn into a much, it could turn much more complicated project than scooping it up and lugging it over.
This guy probably poured the concrete under it.
North Pollock School, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it's stopped the ground.
Sets right top of the ground?
Yeah.
Tip it, tip it down four inches, inch and a half.
So that's, that makes it manageable with the forks?
It is, but then you've got to get onto the green to place it as well.
So it's gonna rack the green, it's gonna make some.
I mean, it's, uh. There's some.
I'm thinking that whoever molds the green accesses it from that excess ramp. So we can't really block that.
So it's doable, you're just gonna have to work your way through it and see what, see what happens.
It could turn into more than just a quick project, just a, as the option, so. Julie?
Is this something that for liability purchases needs to be done by the town, or is this something that the Pollock Historical Society could reach out to volunteers to help them with this project? And all that we would need to do was okay the placement on the green?
I don't really know exactly how, how, if you could have someone insured, volunteers is what it would probably have to boil down into, someone that already carried their own liability insurance.
Well, I mean, we don't own that plaque, right? That's not a Pollock, is that?
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying.
I spoke with the D A R, the Washington State, and they said that if there's a store locker in there, I said, if, if it's on town property, correct, and you want to move it on town property, then you own that.
So the town owns that?
The town would own it.
Okay. That was, it was just my question, if it was something the town needed to do, if we could reach out, but if it's on town property, it probably needs to be town.
Well, I, I thought you were saying like if you had some, something like a local contractor that, that would, that would move it.
Well, if it was owned by the Historical Society, then it's not owned by the town of Pollock. So that was my question, and all they wanted was for our permission to put it on our property, could we get away with not, not taking on the liability of doing it and just approving the placement? It does not sound like that's possible.
Not very likely.
Unless you, please, unless you, there are grants available with the D A R, has to approve the D A R application. They would love to have this done, but they have never heard of this monument, they keep track of monuments. And, um, yes, there are grants. So if you, if you have to hire or, you know, a stone mason, you know, look over the, in conjunction with the town, the movement, and you know, oversee it, I think that would be something.
That, because, because there's a lot of unknowns, I mean, a, a concrete slab like that is very stable right where it is, but you start wiggling it and picking it up and jiggling it and shaking it down the road, you know. It was, it was pretty well, well-supported, but.
Last year all these.
Right? But I mean, sometimes, sometimes you pick something up like that and just in the wiggle, it's not supported in the same way that it's supported on the ground, it cracks happen and.
Well, you have to balance both, I mean, it's a valid whole pass.
Exactly. That's why I'm thinking that it may be a best idea to preserve the value and the quality of that stone, to see if, look into grants and see if you can have a professional move it, if, if there's, if it would be reasonable to get a grant to have, have someone. Is my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but.
Is, is the base part of the historic portion? It probably makes sense to pour a new base here that's capable of supporting it right where it is and just bring the rock over and put on it. That would probably be the best, 'cause you'd never, you'd mess around with it forever trying to get it level and square and plumb and everything.
Always rock.
So.
Think you could see a lot less concrete revealed too. You know, I mean, sticks up out in the ground this well up in here, it's, you know. You're gonna be taking up a lot of, uh, real estate on the green there with just the base of this.
If we were to reduce it to.
With the rock and the plaque on a new base that was set flush at grade, it would be, I think, okay, I think the reason the base was as high as it was was to stabilize the rock, because it's egg shaped, so it's deep.
Yep, yep.
It's a lot smaller where it goes down. And that would just sat on the ground.
Is it pinned into the concrete at all? Is it pinned into the concrete? No.
No, it is.
That was my worry, is you go over there and start wiggling, I'm thinking that rock may.
It very well be, if you could pick the rock up, probably the concrete would fall off that. Because I believe it's tapered back toward, toward the end cone.
It's egg shaped, just like that, and then the dome taking down and the concrete on the bottom. You know, it's, it's served its purpose there, but it would, certainly the value in that monument is not in that four foot concrete footing that it sets in over there, it's in the plaque.
It would be more, it would be better off to be removed from the base it sit in and placed in a new base to ensure that it didn't fall out and break. Because in the moving process, there's really nothing that holds it in the base, just gravity, so you start wiggling and shaking.
So allows you to place it without disturbing the entire green to access it.
Right.
If you've gotta get just the rock there.
Right. You could use a lot smaller piece of equipment to, to put it in position, so you wouldn't route the lawn all up and stuff with a big, big machine.
I think that aesthetically though, I, you know, it is, it's quite dark. And to keep it on the base like that aesthetic, it would elevate the.
Well, that's, that may be fine, but, but, what we feel is that there's, there's a high risk of damage. And we don't really wanna take that project on, is what I'm, what I'm hearing and feeling, just from the description of, of what's going on. I don't think that we're really geared to, to do such a project to, to keep our damage, you know. We're, we don't really have the proper equipment, you know, you'd be more likely to have somebody that deals with monuments move it than, than the town crew, so.
Well, is the board okay with moving that monument? If we do get a grant and a stone mason who can oversee this move and do it properly?
I'm fine with it. I mean, I think it makes more sense to have the monument here where it's much more likely to be seen than over there. What do you feel about it, Chuck?
You know, it needs to be here. My real question is, um, maybe somebody like, uh, Leanne Corey or, uh, Ashley Wade, Fred Mason, one of these three, uh, contractors, I mean, they, they would have insurance if, if, God forbid, were needed, but, you know. And it needs to be done probably like a couple other things sooner than later.
Well.
When the weather changes.
Okay, so are you okay with them looking into options to get funding to have that moved here? And to move to the.
How long do you think that's gonna take?
I don't know, I don't know. I know, I, I have an application, and it has to go through the D A R, Borders of American Revolution. They have given me an address in Manchester, and they have to sign one. And, uh, on the application, and hopefully we can get funding for it.
I would think that it would never happen this fall anyways.
I wouldn't be surprised that Hick's Memorial might be able to have the right equipment to move that pretty smoothly.
So everybody's okay with her putting it on the green? So why don't you look into some fundings and see what you can find, and we can find some balance there, I think it would be great. Is everybody kinda on board with her, our placement?
Yes.
That sounds like a good spot, and, and I like the idea kinda blending that all together, so. I think that, that the board feels that you can continue to push forward, try and secure some funding to get it moved, because we don't feel that the town, the town crew has the proper equipment to, to do it, to safely move it without too much risk of damage.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any announcement?
Yes, I have a couple. Um, so just quickly, the first one is I attended an online informational session workshop regarding the municipal highway and stormwater mitigation grant program, which the application is due October fourth, so it's definitely something that could be discussed under old business, but it's a much more involved grant, um, so just a couple of factors to be considered prior to applying. Um, the other one is that we received a letter from VTEL, and without reading the whole thing, essentially, um, it was brought to their attention that some towns who they serve their fiber optic telephone service to would like them to provide a workshop or informational session regarding the fiber optic network and its reliance on consumer provided power. Um, they're happy to come and offer one of these workshops or information sessions if the townspeople are interested in attending one, so. It's something that I can set up, I would say if and only if people actually have an interest in coming, so. If anybody wants to provide feedback on that to me at my email at your convenience, I can do that. If not, we can thank them kindly for their offer, and.
Could you share that with Mary Lou?
I could do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's all from me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have no zoning administrator's report. In case anyone doesn't know in the audience, it, Hal Wilkins, our zoning administrator, has passed away. Um, we are searching for, uh, at least an interim candidate to take over until we can find someone, uh, that can fill that position permanently. If anybody has any ideas on anybody that would be a good candidate, please have them contact the select board.
On the issue of what's outstanding on zoning?
Yes.
Uh, I did look over the, uh, permit applications.
Uh huh.
Yes, and I didn't study them at all, but I just looked to see whether they were in order.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Deb and Julie have done a nice job of organizing what's outstanding, what's, what's an open application, what's been signed by, or approved by Hal before the rest of it. And, uh, they've, uh, got a good log of all the phone calls that they've had. So they've got, they have a good order. So for whoever comes in to play terror, it's gonna, have an easy job.
Excellent, thank you. Dolores?
If you have an interim zoning administrator.
Yeah.
Who would be overseeing his, uh, shall we say competence?
I guess we would be choosing that, and the board would be trying to main, you know, work closely with him to see.
You know, because we have a lot of residual problems that we're just trying to clear up.
Right.
And I really wanted to make this comment. I am thankful that Hal did all the work that he did. And I think, uh, I'm very saddened by his passing. And I think that, you know, as a town, we should show respect for him. And whatever what manner, uh, and moving forward, just make sure that we have, um, people in place. I know now we have an attorney who's really watching out for the town and doing the job that the town attorney should, and the guy doing zoning things, but, you know, overseeing the work of somebody who had an interim basis, uh, I guess I'm just fearful.
Any, anybody that we would consider for an interim basis would have to have some good background in zoning, and, and it wouldn't be all new to them. We wouldn't, we wouldn't consider somebody that didn't have a strong background already.
Yeah, and good credentials, that they didn't screw up the last, um, not to be bitter, but, you know, that's an important thing. Thank you.
Okay. Planning Commission?
Okay, um, last night we discussed the Community Values Mapping Project, which we're, uh, starting, uh, October first. Monica, Chris Perhart from the Vermont Fish and Wildlife will lead the first of three public. three public, uh, sessions next Tuesday, October 1st, followed by two follow-up sessions on October 16th and November 14th. The sessions will start at 7:00 PM at the community, at the Meadowwee Community School and will, uh, all residents are invited and urged to participate, uh, to benchmark what the community most values in the town. Um, and each session will probably last about two hours. This has been posted at the post office. It's posted here. It's been, it's on Deb's, uh, Facebook page. I hope that we've got enough publicity out there to, uh, encourage some participation. Uh, next item we discussed was open positions. Uh, you already went through Hal's position, so I'll go through that. Um, and Deb Hawkins has also published the advertisement for the planning commission secretary, uh, clerk secretary open position, um, and has received one response. So I'll contact that person, uh, tomorrow and arrange for a personal interview. Item three, the municipal planning grant. At your last meeting, you, um, uh, signed and authorized the resolution form for the fiscal year 20 municipal, uh, municipal, uh, planning grant to allow the planning commission to apply for this grant. Uh, the purpose of the grant is to assist with the cost of developing a comprehensive economic development plan that will become part of the revised town plan. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission has begun the grant application on our behalf so it can be submitted by the deadline of October 1st, next Tuesday. Uh, the cost of the town, uh, will be, if we receive, if we receive a grant will be 10% of the amount. So if we go for $22,000 as a grant, uh, the maximum we have to point to is $22,000. So I will meet with, uh, Amanda O'Clann and Ed Boe tomorrow, uh, to, uh, work on the final And the final, uh, issue we talked about was, um, the 10 acre town designation. Eric Mack agreed to contact Bill Burke of the, uh, Executive Commission to get the guidelines and assistance in completing registration of Paulit as a 10 acre town, as was approved. You have this down as item eight, bulletin number one. Did you have any further discussion on that or was this discussion for now?
Just, just that, that part that, that the planning commission was working on, gathering all the information so that they could...
So that's where we are on right now.
Yes.
So I had heard from John Thrasher actually on the 15th of September, um, with an update on what had happened, um, with that conversion thing. Um, so I can forward...
Are you fully informed on it now as to what happened?
Well, I can, I can, um...
Because he hasn't returned any of Eric's phone calls, uh...
Well, look how special I am.
Yeah, right.
So I can, I'm happy to read it if you'd like and I can send it to you so that you can, um... So he attached the procedure to convert from a one to 10 acre town. Back in 2015, Bill Burke had concerns about whether the proper notices were sent when the planning commission amended the bylaws to include subdivision regulations and convert to a 10 acre town. At the time, the town hired the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to help us rework the zoning bylaws and adopt subdivision regulations. And the RRPC were responsible for sending the appropriate notices and retrieving the green cards. After Bill Burke complained about defective notice, Eric, Deb and myself tracked down the information the town had and got what the RRPC did and we provided all the info to Bill Burke to show proper notice was sent. Then Bill responded back with the attached email from June 19th, 2015. In reviewing the email and the bylaws with Bill, he felt that the bylaws as written did not have the appropriate design standards. See section one B in Bill's email. I then prepared and provided the planning commission with draft proposed bylaws in 2015 to address the claimed deficiencies by Bill Burke. These 2015 design standards were never adopted into the bylaws. I included the same design review standards in 2018 when the planning commission was looking at revising the bylaws regarding the school definition. See draft amendments also attached. This spring, summer, Hal or Eric left me a message looking for these revisions and again I provided a copy to Deb to give to the planning commission. So regard, I don't think it's necessary to go into discussion of what has already happened, but what I can do moving forward and in interest of time, I can send that to you so that you have everything that you need. So...
If you have the time to send it to me tonight, I'd appreciate it.
I'm gonna do it right now.
RRPC tomorrow.
Doing it as we speak. You're welcome. Technology is so good.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the planning commission?
Uh, ongoing with the same stuff. I mean, we did wrap up the other two projects we wanted to do on 153. We've got the extension on the, the concrete culvert and we changed the culvert by getting those. Um, and we're over 3,000 tons of material that we've piled and a lot of hell what's going on there. See it every day. We got one truck down, um, the 2013, brakes weren't functioning properly and I was adjusting and got into it. Ben's over there working on it now, is changing some can shaft bushings and stuff because they were pretty tight. Lot of play in it and we've got, uh, that has a rubber block suspension that needs some attention right now, which is, I think normally is 85,000 miles, 5,400 hours on that truck right now. So it's routine stuff, but needs to be done. There's no question whether we're gonna do it or not, I guess. So I just hope to just tell Ben to keep going till it's done, so.
That's a drive, that's a drive axle to brakes or...
Yeah, the rear axle was the one that bothered. That's, the drums are fine, but the, the pest cam is just chucking back and forth and there's the bushing shot, so. So we'll do it all while he's there, I think.
What, would you have some idea on what, what it's gonna be for like the suspension components and stuff like that?
I don't know. He was on the phone looking for them today and, and they said they were day out wherever he called, but I don't know what the price is going to be on that. It's cheaper leaf springs.
But they're also wear items, so. Okay. How much longer do you think you'll need to haul material?
Well, I think when we get that stretch we're on now done, we'll be on to other things and we may have some thin spots and some spots to dress up when we go through the grader in the fall. We have some, could use some more material on the Herrick Road. I mean, if we don't get it there, we have enough, we could touch up some driveways and stuff and make it work for the winter. But if we have the time and the weather holds, we should probably add some to that as well.
Okay, so we, we should need to make sure that all the driveways on the Herrick Road are, are brought back to standard. We've had some complaints on that. Okay. And let's see, we got about one more month before we can be thinking about snow and stuff. What about stone for the sand?
Uh, well, it's, we can still get, uh, good price on that if we go from over there.
Uh-huh.
7.45 a ton.
Uh-huh.
And it's, um, it's available. I don't know, the thing I didn't ask is if they shut down. When do they close?
I don't know. We've, I've never had to go over there very late in the season.
That's what I mean. They may stop that.
They, they run quite long into the year though, I believe.
I'll find that...
I think probably a lot of, has to do with the weather. I think they're very weather dependent, so.
We're supposed to, uh, draw a little bit for Rupert too to get at some of their out, so that'll be coming from Wells to Rupert. Still, we've got to figure that into our fall schedule as well, so.
I've been by there in November and I'm pretty sure I've seen trucks coming out.
I'm pretty sure they are chucked, but I don't know for...
Thanksgiving time, I'm guessing, it's probably close to there.
Usually...
Locking up.
Usually that's when the paving, paving companies shut down too around Thanksgiving. So I would bet that they probably run hard right till Thanksgiving and...
Well, they were open later last year because New York State was...
Needed it. Chuck, you said you had some things you wanted to talk to Keith about?
Yeah, um, okay, we just met with a couple tonight prior to our meeting. They're talking about, we're talking about the little, uh, what's that building called? Um, the little school, just, it connects to, uh...
The old coal building.
Yeah.
It's the old coal building, next to Fishing Game.
Okay, so apparently water from the highway is running into that building. You're, we're still aware of the culvert or the drain issue by the corner of the old firehouse. You now have an issue at the Harrington, what was the Harrington property that Dave Hosley owns, which when they tore that thing down and dug it up, they hit a tile that apparently comes down New Street on the right-hand side of the highway. We worked on the left-hand side. Um, so it looks like there's some issues there on the west side that somehow need to be addressed.
Yeah, I met with Dave after he talked with him. He came, he came, he said he saw you and then when he drove, I was in the excavator.
He saw you in the excavator?
He stopped and I went down with him and we looked at that. I have no idea what it is. It's culvert, steel culvert, about that far under the ground there. And my assumption is it is probably some kind of abandoned storm drain. It probably was compromised when, uh, I'm just looking at it and trying to establish it aids to it, probably was pre wastewater treatment pipe. So it's, it's old and it probably was compromised when the wastewater treatment pipe was put it up through there because it goes right down through there and it probably is abandoned. Now, it took water last night in rainstorm.
Yeah.
I have no idea where, where it went. It went down, it went down the pipe. That's, that's pretty clear. Down at, uh, Katrina's building there is, uh, there's a lot going on there. I mean, it's not entirely all the town's issue there. We did go down last fall, Perry and I, and put a cold patch to berm across there to turn it so it would direct it down through towards the, uh, into the, uh, storm drain in front of the post office. But, uh, beyond that, I haven't even looked at it, so. But there is, uh, the water comes off the highway, it comes off the buildings, it comes off the rail trail and it all goes down through the back there. And in the back of that building, the grade all tips away from the building towards the basement. So any water that falls in there sets right in that hollow.
Well, this couple made the comment to us at our, when we met with them, that they didn't have the issue, the sidewalk was higher than the highway until we paved it.
Until we blacked out.
So now that water is ending up in that building. You know, it's just somewhere or somehow it probably needs to be addressed along with those other two issues that we already had an issue with that storm drain.
Yeah, and I don't know what, we're just gonna have to monitor that thing at Dave Hosley's and see, this, who, who, who knows? There certainly never was any map or any, had plans or as-built plans or anything as to what was over there for a collection system. All we know about is what we have installed and that's basically from Rodney Parks's road back to the firehouse library or Friday Firehouse parking lot right there.
Said that Leon couldn't really make a determination on what it, what it was. Definitely not, you know, it's, it's water, it's not anything else.
Yeah, yeah, it's all it is.
Right, and often we don't even know what, if it's even plugged up on the other end or where it is.
Could come from that storm drain way up at, uh, Parker's.
Yeah.
You know, where they pull off the park right there. I had assumed that everything there crossed the road and went down where we replaced the pipe, but, uh, I don't know that, you know? I mean...
Right.
And there could have been a collection system on each side of the road originally.
That's a situation that you'll monitor and you get a good rein, rein of that, you may go over and see if you can see what...
I can't believe a daylight's anywhere.
Right.
I can't, I just, I don't know where it would.
Okay.
Unless it's in the basement across the street there. So I don't know where it would go. There's no pipes across 153 go across there other than what, where, whatever.
Then those two, then those two drains that are already there.
Unless it went across behind the firehouse to the double one there by Mitchellville Place or something, you know? I don't think so.
I think that's all that's out behind that firehouse. So, all right, and that little, that little building, you'll...
I'll look at it and see.
Try and stop and see if there's something we can do to...
We can maybe raise a berm up in the driveway again or something. I don't, I know when we left there last year, it was turning the water. Now, it doesn't mean that those storm banks and the plumbing and everything else, I, I haven't even looked at it since, so.
Well, they're gonna have to have a sewer hookup because it's never had one. It has a piece of PVC pipe that goes into the neighboring building.
Oh, it goes into the Fishing Game and then...
Doesn't go anywhere.
Okay.
According to them.
Hey, there was a, there was a sewer, there was a, uh, a piece of sewer stubbed out for, for access to that. But I remember old Bush saying that he never hooked it up because he never even had running water in the place.
So have, have they been paying the hookup fee?
Yes.
Yeah.
That, that place has always paid a hookup fee according to my, because Don Bush, who owned it for many years, said, he, he used to complain about it because he said he never even had running water in the place. But that's another, that's a secondary fish.
They gotta, they gotta pay for it. But we'll have to, uh, we'll have to make, uh, I forgot what Ray called it, uh...
Lateral?
Lateral? Yeah.
Lateral.
There we are.
We were told there was no lateral to that building though.
I'm, I'm pretty, well, the, the maps are down in the plant anyways, right? So there, there's a set of maps in the plant that can be evaluated, but I can't believe every building in town had a, had a lateral to it when they put that sewer in.
No, no, not a lateral.
Had a T.
Oh, a T.
A T.
Oh, a T, okay. They had a connection point, but it may be all the way out at the main line.
Maybe, it probably is at the main line. There was a T in it.
Because we had to go all the way out to that, didn't we? The homeowner had to go all the way out to that when he did it. Okay, I'm, got my words confused, okay. They don't...
Did you put that culvert in there, Keith?
Uh, which one?
The one that goes between the two buildings.
That was there prior to me, Tom.
Because that pipe that they talked about in that building, in the old coal building, I did look at that and it has PVC pipe coming right out the wall heading right, and they're saying it goes into Fishing Game building. And it's right over the top of that big culvert pipe would be my guess because that's about the height of the sidewall where that PVC came out.
That, that culvert, we've done the next two down, but that one is original from prior to that.
Wow.
Well, it'd be nice, nice to get our ducks in a row so we know what we've gotta do when we need to do it.
So if you could do some evaluation of that for us and give us a little feedback, that would be great.
That's all I have.
Bob, you got anything for Keith? John?
We, we'll be, we'll welcomes and grade.
We will be, we'll welcome some grading when time comes.
That's...
It's pretty much, much portier wind pennies, and apparently up above Woods is...
Close to, uh, to start again too, right? Soon, just as quick as you're done with the...
Maybe dirt and back and forth, and not getting too far away from the road or delivering material. Down the road, probably.
Right. Circle down.
Oh. It was. The, a couple people mentioned, uh, new highway garage. If that were to ever come in effect, should we be talking to Karen Mack in regards to Ron Kiblin's extending the right-of-way of our road into the gravel pit? Before Ronnie passes on?
Wouldn't be a bad idea to start the conversation.
If that's where, you know, if you think that's where we would build at some point?
That would certainly make the most, the most sense.
It's in, it's in between the two towns.
That's the one town.
That would allow it to, uh, to be centrally located, and we, we could, uh, we would not need the West Pollock Garage anymore.
Well, right. Could work out in one base anyway.
That, it's really, I don't know.
But I'm, I'm just, you know, I think we need to be aware of where we might be heading down, down the road.
It would, it would require a better right-of-way.
Well, I, I think that what the state's discussing at this time was, that's still on the books.
You know, it's funny, they've never talked again about it.
Well, it's, it's a holdup, and it's government, so it takes time, you know? So, I actually talked with Rob Failing about it at Department of State Councils a couple of weeks ago, and he said it was still on.
It's still, it's still something, okay?
Still there, but he said the potential is there for the narrow right-of-way of access to cause a problem, so.
The other state, they can take it.
Well, they could, but that's the less desirable of the options.
Right, of the options, right. So if we, if we could come up with a, an alternative solution that we could acquire that right-of-way, it would be worth us spending some money to acquire. What, what is the right-of-way now, like a 24 or just the road?
It is, it's just the road, and it is not a right-of-way, it's a continuation. The property is staked out back to there with the road out. The road is part of the acreage of the property, and it's not considered a right-of-way.
Right, because, okay.
We own the road, but it's not, it's not 50 feet. And by your own unified bylaws, it says you have to have 50-foot of road from it, just...
So we, right, so...
It might be as narrow as 16 feet in one place.
So that would be, that would be an option that we should try and acquire some of that property to make...
Make a wider...
Make it a more viable, especially if the state was, was willing to, uh, to come in on some of that.
Or all of it.
What's that?
I said or all of it.
Okay. I did have another conversation with Craig over at North Trax, he's pretty, he's locked in. He swears that they, they did, they evaluated as best, best possible, and, and... The, the only thing he could come up with is, is that at some point when we were trying to get through that it could have gone a little bit low on oil, and that could have caused a bearing failure, 'cause it was the second bearing up in the, in the rack. He wouldn't, he wouldn't bend on anything, but we had a nice conversation, actually, this morning, I'd been...
Really wouldn't expect it to be anything.
No, but it doesn't hurt to...
No, it didn't.
It, it doesn't hurt to talk, and, and I, I did question a lot of stuff. We talked about everything, including the age of the workforce and, and stuff like that. And the fact that he, you know, that he had, he had been a service tech before he was a service writer, and that he has a lot of well-seasoned mechanics in there and stuff like that, so. And I, I questioned him about different things, about not, not seeing, you know, oil contamination, and he assured us that he drained it into clean buckets and, and all that stuff. I said, sort of sending out for an oil analysis, we wouldn't have known it in advance. They, they checked...
Plus he had to answer the culprit, too.
He's always been talking with them, too.
Well, I talked to them way back, and then I have some issues with how they do their billing, but that was just sort of separate.
That seems to be pretty standard. North Trax is kind of a, a odd, that accounting system is kind of odd. Others, like, we, we have some problems with them at work and stuff, too. We've been leasing motors from them for 15 years. Okay, so that's, I guess that's where we stand. I would like to say that those two culverts that you repaired look nice. I'm glad, I'm...
Not the, the big one yet.
Right.
Might be a little bigger, real thin, but the pipe is in place.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying, sometimes your, your finish gets rushed a little bit, and it looks like you paid a lot of attention to your finish on these two culverts, more so than, more so than in some that I've seen, and I would like to just compliment you and your staff on that. So. Quite often, that's the first P, part that people see that, that have zero idea on the whole project, but if they see that the, the ground isn't smoothed out nice, or that you didn't put your grass down, well, instantly in their mind, it turns into a crappy job, and, and I don't, I don't like... You, you do all that much work and then leave, it's like fixing up your house and not painting it.
Little, Little Red didn't jump past it either today.
Dolores?
I just wanted to thank Keith with the efficiency and, uh, speed with which things changed to that culvert by our house. I thought you did a really good job, and you worked very hard at that. I, I couldn't believe how little disruption there was for the traffic. So, good job, Keith.
Nice. Steve?
Yeah, I got a suggestion, too. Um, for the last 22 years, I've been trying to get water off of the Indian Hill, especially during the springtime, when everything's melting, and always runs across river road there and causes a skating rink. Um, I'm thinking that my, my ditch there that's beside the driveway needs to be cleaned out. I keep digging it out, and it needs to be an extension pipe put down, 'cause every year when we have that melt-off, it creates ice, and cars just about go flying into the field. And I'm just wondering if the town can come in and add four, six feet of extension on that pipe and bury it, and I think that would solve the problem that we've been having for the last 20 years in there. And I've moved all, all the water, so it all shoots across the road, underneath the road, but that one area keeps causing problems, water comes down driveway, that's all blocked up right there, and it just shoots right across the road and freezes. Especially with winter coming.
It certainly does do that. I know that, um, I'll look at it, we can clean the ditches there.
You can evaluate that and see if you can do something better.
Usually coming down the wheel track, and it's, there's, the water's not getting through the available ditch, is what usually the problem is.
Yeah.
With snowbank, it even...
If it was just a little further down, the water coming out of the culvert, I think that would solve the problem.
With your permission, we may be able to go up your driveway a little faster and exceed the right-of-way and do something there that would, would catch it. Sometimes if we, sometimes if we go habitate like that, it's better for both of us.
I'm fine with that, we can have a talk.
Suggestions, excellent, thank you. Anybody else have anything for Keith?
Yeah, I know you're gonna clean the ditches out on the switch road for self-while, where it starts burning all over the road again like you did last year. I don't know if we'll get there or not, Ray. Um, I got the shame, and I can do it if you can't get to it. So, yeah. The water runs down the edge of the road there and has way before me or Ray was here. But, yeah, the ditch is pushing pushed back.
That's all the straight part coming, coming right out.
He's all the way to set...
All the way...
The bank just keeps sliding into the ditch.
So it is, it is a potential project if the weather cooperates. If we can get our other projects to finish the grading and all the stone haul, and to pay back Rupert, it is, it is gonna try and be attempted for this season.
Well, if it doesn't freeze solid, with water running it down it all the time, it...
It's the same thing, it doesn't, it makes a glacier and just continues to roll.
Maybe if, if it's half-froze.
Twice, and then the water's displaced into the road.
If it's half-froze, you might be able to get it.
Do we have an assessor's report?
No, but there's an item, um, on Deb's report, and it is 8:30, just before, just saying, so. Time to move along.
Right.
But, yeah, there is an item on Deb's report that talks about the assessors. There's an errors and omissions, um, form that needs some interest from you all.
Okay, so where is the errors and omissions?
Right here.
I guess we'll deal with that right now?
Yeah, it's the beginning of the town clerk's memo. There is one other item prior to that, which I can, I looked at a little bit.
Okay, but since that's an assessors item, we'll, we'll, we'll just do it right now, then. They both, they, they go back-to-back anyways, right?
Why was that parcel given, uh, why was that parcel given a new number rather than just combined with a Fish and Game? Are you aware of that?
The...
Bruce Waits.
So Bruce and Janet owned property that had its own parcel ID.
Right.
And the Fish and Game owns property that has its own parcel ID.
Okay.
The only issue was that a survey done by Fish and Game showed that Bruce and Janet's property was not the number of acres originally believed. Rather than deal with all of that, they asked them to sign a quitclaim deed to just cleanly get that acreage that was always supposed to be the Fish and Game's in the Fish and Game's name, free and clear. So I don't think there was a new parcel ID issue that I know of. It's just a change in number of acreage. Now, I haven't read her memo, so I don't know what you're talking about.
There's something about... 'Cause I don't know when Frog gave them 10, 11 acres, that was incorporated, I assume, in the same, same number.
Right. And I, I don't know that the land that went from Waits to Fish and Game was issued its own separate parcel ID.
That's what it seems to say there, I don't know, you read it?
It says a new parcel number was created.
Well, it's a question we can ask Karen some other time.
Yeah, I'm not, I... If Bruce, if Bruce Waits gave the property to the Fish and Game, why did his grand list go almost double? Is what I don't...
So Bruce and... My understanding of this issue is that Bruce and Janet own about 46 acres. They have been taxed in the past on 120-something acres.
Okay.
Because that's what they're, there was a belief that they had that. Fish and Game believed that their boundaries were well within that, and that Bruce and Janet did not own that many acres. They did a survey, survey says West Pollock Fish and Game own that, Bruce and Janet don't.
Right.
West Pollock Fish and Game said, just please, just do, just do a PTTR, and we'll just get this done. You'll transfer ownership of this property, it's cleaner and neater than everything else.
So the Fish and Game gave it?
So, no. So Bruce and Janet gave 80-something acres to the Fish and Game.
On paper.
Maintaining ownership of what they've always owned, and losing ownership of what was a contentious issue.
Okay.
With no clear owner.
Okay.
Okay? Their, so their first tax bill was based on 46 acres, because their property transfer happened before the first of April, so grand list reflected that. Then, current use came in and amended the amount of money that they gave them towards the property value, because current use uses a different standard, and they don't go by the first of April. So they came in and said, we aren't gonna change what we do, you have to change everything that you did. So now Bruce and Janet have a new tax bill that is based on 126 acres again. So...
So that's why it went, that's why, that's why it pretty much doubled, okay?
And it's going to be that way until next year.
About a thousand an acre?
Yeah, it, it basically, it almost doubled, and their grand list doubled, and I was like, wait a minute, if they gave right-of-way, why their grand list doubled, 'cause, okay, all right.
So you just can't show it yet.
Want to make a motion that we approve this errors and omissions, John?
Uh, I signed it, but I shouldn't, since I'm in a butter up here.
Okay. Chuck, do you want to make a motion, since you signed it? Bob, you want to second it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Okay, a mailing addressed to me in regard to litigation. I don't, I didn't see that.
Oh, it's, um, hold on, so, it's, um, notice from the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio in regards to the national prescription opiate litigation. Um, it has a November 22nd deadline. I just briefly looked at it, and as we were discussing earlier, not understanding all sorts of legal stuff, I think that, um, it would be best to maybe send it over to Merrill and see if she can review it, and just see if it's something that pertains to us.
Yeah, see if it's some scammy thing.
Yeah, so, that would be my recommendation on that.
I looked at that very briefly, I didn't read all of it, but it seems to me like it's one of these great big lawsuits where enough people have gathered together and hired attorneys, that it's just like, you have to assign something to opt out of the lawsuit.
It'll, will automatically be included in it.
Nationally, across the nation, municipalities of all shapes and sizes have sued pharmaceutical companies that manufacture opiates.
Oh, okay.
So it's kind of like, hey, you're a municipality, you're in this lawsuit unless you tell us you don't want to be.
Okay. So, so then we have to make a decision whether or not we want to be, then?
Yeah, and you can feel free to run it by an attorney and see what they suggest.
Could you, could you mail it? One of you guys mail it to...
To Merrill.
To Merrill and just ask for her opinion?
Yep.
Uh, Hillary Solomon.
That's church drainage.
Okay, operation of the maintenance plan for Pollock Community Church Drainage.
We have that, too, and the keeper's.
Still have an issue with that, but...
You're, you're concerned about it?
I'm concerned that it turns into a town liability, even though we don't own it.
All we're supposed to do is notify them it's not working.
Do you guys plow the parking lot, or they have their own?
They hire...
Deanna, or?
Lee and Tori, I think, Kirk and Joseph.
Okay.
Maybe.
I think Deanna was at the last end.
I mean, we hired... But, yeah, they, they hired them, we don't plow.
But the firehouse, Deanna?
Dave Osley usually does the West Polat one.
Probably Doug does this one.
All the fire departments. I hear Nate started squilling, so I had to take it out. Now I can't hear.
Squilling.
Oh, yeah, she heard it.
I did. Sounded like it hurt.
Yeah, I need it here.
Fire those.
My grandmother would never get hers. She would be like, Grandma!
So Keith, um, the, the section that we see, the town Apollo agrees to periodically check the drop inlets and the sumps in the two cross culverts utilized by this project. One near the church structure and one in the parking area. The town will notify Vitrions if either drop culvert inlet or sump needs maintenance. Vitrions routinely maintains the culverts along Route one thirty-three. So it's, it's just like, yeah.
All asking houses to monitor the situation and pass it along if it needs attention.
Okay, so.
Basically, for that grant proposal, the way I see it, it's an endorsement from the town fathers that they're supporting the project to get it done to make it more eligible for the season.
Right. Yeah, we like it, so.
That's basically what it is.
Okay, does someone want to, uh, someone want to make a motion that I sign this? Or, we didn't last week, did we? We were waiting on a.
Reworded.
Yeah, on how that was.
She had it written up wrong, I think.
So, someone want to make it a motion?
I will.
John? Bob?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
If Raster and Muffet's on the back table, please eat them.
Now that's an announcement.
I leave them last night.
Do you want Julie to give her treasurer's report while you're?
Okay.
Back to Deb.
Julie and I attended the VMCTA annual meeting and have to say it was one of the best ones I've attended. SOS condos arranged for the unscheduled session with regard to cybersecurity. Wow, there are office, here at the office, we're pretty good and not opening suspicious emails and have pretty healthy computers. We have a, recently a hack that targeted our emails under the guise of the town managers and select board chairs and yes, Mike Beecher was included. Best practice is to never, ever open attachment unless you're a hundred and ten percent sure of where it's coming from and what you are expecting it. Same goes for any kind of social media, never click on any link that you're not sure of. Uh, please sign the card. I provided to send Hal's family and thank you all for participating in the abatement hearing. Have a good evening, Deb. All right, we have Hal's card right here that we'll pass along. Town treasurer's, there are three warrants to be signed. Does everybody read, did anybody look at the warrant shot?
No, we haven't.
I'm busy, huh? Seventy checks to be signed, twelve payroll, twenty-five appropriations through your accounts payable. Holy moly.
I've been busy.
I guess, probably.
Spending money.
Are you going to be meeting with Mark Johnson from Recap, that's, uh, our cap? Uh, that's the guy from the, for the sewer to help us, help us through this. And the same thing that Deb said. Learned a lot, had a fun time with trainings and the conference will benefit for the con, from the content of the sessions and networking and making connection with fellow clerks and treasures. Excellent. It's great to go to them and bring a lot away. Hal Wilkins was paid up through August twenty-fourth. Deb and I talked and we know there was, he was here on August twenty-eighth for six hours, so I'm recommending we pay him for those six hours. And additional six hours of time for working from home based on trends I noticed last time she, for a total of twelve hours. Away authorization to process this payroll. Are we all in favor of that?
Sure.
Yeah. Regarding wastewater billing cycle, we need to close two due dates because it went out quarterly payments. The final due date would be August there. Therefore, outside of the fiscal year, I recommend, I recommended November ten and January ten, March ten and May ten. We can remedy this next billing cycle by adjusting the timeframe and setting rates, allowing us to have first payment due in August or September. This would result in one payment due at the same time as tax collection either way, but I feel the need to collect the money in the fiscal year. Okay, is everybody okay with November ten, January ten, March ten and May ten? That's the one that you feel is going to be the best option for now?
Well, I think, I think our goal was to do it quarterly, but if you do it quarterly, we don't collect all of the money this fiscal year and I don't, I think that's just very messy.
Yeah, okay.
So.
So then.
If we do it every two months, this, this time, and then we'll come back in and set rates in July or August and.
And then we'll be back on track, okay?
Okay, so this is just temporary?
This is just for this?
Just get through this year.
This, this curve until we're back on track, okay?
Um, I sent you the letter that I had written to go with those.
Right.
Um, I've run into, I potentially have run into a snapper with printing the bills. I don't know. That I'll be able to get all the information that I want on it.
Okay.
The only thing I would potentially change is to add into that letter, um, what the payment amounts would be or, you know, if I can get them printed.
Okay.
But, um, I don't know, if everyone wants to approve the letter, I have written it at least I have you or I want to be a. I didn't say, I yet have that.
I didn't.
Are you doing it in quarters or how are you?
So I, I, the, the goal, I think, when we set this and offered the option of making four payments was to do four evenly spaced out throughout the year. If we do that, our final collection is at August, which is outside of this fiscal year.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just saying, is, are you suggesting right now that it would be in quarters, each payment?
Each payment would be.
Be one fourth?
One fourth, yes.
Yeah.
Um, so.
It seems real confusing because it's two months, three months, two months, five months.
And my, my belief at this, at this point is that I'll be able to work through with members and get bills printed that say payment one, two days, eleven, ten, nineteen, X amount. Payment two, two days, X amount, and that would be clear as day, as opposed to clear as month. And would be fantastic. I wrote a letter that would accompany out of bills to explain the rate increase. And it just says, this letter is to inform you that we as a select board set to do wastewater rates for the upcoming year and there will be a significant increase. Making this decision was not easy, but due to increased operating expenses, it was necessary. We know that any increase in fees can result in hardship for users and as such, we have elected to offer the option of four payments per year as opposed to the traditional two payments. This information is reflected on the tax bill that accompany this letter. You can do adjust that sentence and actually give them the information in the body of this letter, that's all. Um, if you wish to continue to pay in only two installments, that's always an option. Should you have any questions regarding this bill or new collection procedure, feel free to reach out to the town college treasurer, who will actually provide the answers to questions. Sincerely, Mike Beecher, Paul Self.
I was fine with that. Did anybody else have any comments?
No, I'm good on that. But if you have a question.
It's like she's putting words in your mouth.
Four years, this. David Hostly, five thousand. I think it's the right amount, was it?
Yes.
The black top.
The black top.
Confused with the change of the blonde.
Two, Dave Junior.
And then Dodge. Pretty expensive repair. But I guess we knew what going in.
What else do we do besides the oil can?
Uh, front springs, quarter springs, um, I don't know, Pete Bent must have it all on there. It did something, it was a turbo, new coolant lines, braided lines and the ends were all, fittings were all rusted on the end of them. Um, yeah, just numerous odds and end pieces in there.
Almost nine thousand.
So I'll have you sign this now and if I have to amend it, I'll get another one to you.
Yeah.
Did you get that? You found the sign?
No. Oh, we need to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, no, only got the twenty twenty.
We all gonna sign this?
I hope you guys signed at the last meeting for the wastewater user fees.
Oh, that's right, we have to.
So that's, I'm adding that to Julie's memo, that you have to sign that.
Do we need chapter? How are we doing this? I hear he's doing that, but we need to just go over the warrants. Um, is there emergency management director?
We already discussed those last meeting.
Right, that's right. Where am I? I'm at the end of the month, not the beginning. I'm always, it's a good thing you're keeping me alive. Wastewater is, is pretty much the same. You took care of that, shut, shut the, uh, the lights off for the night and I don't know, were they back on track the next day or?
I don't think they just, they'll waste the next day. I don't think they can jump on you morning.
Yeah.
So, but they're, I was in there today, running one flare fire.
Uh huh.
And, um, it's pretty cloudy because it hasn't settled down. It's not. I think anytime you do what they did, you're changing the whole schematic of all that's running. You're changing the bacteria and everything. It's got to fill some plugs back in there and get a digestion process going, so. Got no reason to think it won't smooth out.
Right, right.
It's going to, uh, impact their, for example.
Right. It made, it made a big check. Okay. John's going over the.
What was this, uh, starting a new account with Hank of Bennington for the highway fund account or?
That's Julie's department, not mine. I just figured the bills. That must be the money market.
Julie, this.
Bennington, John has a question.
Do we each have to, is this just for highway employees?
Yes, that, um, apparently there was just, uh, an account that was missed that I was supposed to be added on the signer. And so everyone that's a signer needs to sign that, if I'm remembering correctly. I feel like I've had that for a while. You kept forgetting to bring it to you.
It's dated August twenty-first.
Yeah.
Um, we need to sign one of these things each?
Yeah, I think there should be a spot for you. Are there not?
Sign your own. Well, there's four to. We endorse your signature on the checks, so we probably have to sign that too, don't we?
It's just the one equipment fund, yeah, so I don't know why she only gave us four things, but, um, I think we would need more than that. So, um, you guys must not all be on this. If three of you will sign that and I'll sign the other one, I think that would be good enough.
That's.
It's the, it's not one that I.
Unless we buy equipment that.
It's very rarely.
It's just because your loan's out, you have the financing out with, with the.
Yeah.
So I've got to fill one out?
Yeah.
Your vice and Mike should be signing it too, right?
And honestly, probably that would be good enough and then I'll be the other one and then that should be fine.
Did you miss one?
No, that's the, that's the sewer one that got misplaced.
Yep.
Right. It just, it just vanished, so it's fine.
I had three copies in my folder, but they all, I just wrote all over all of them, so.
My office was such a mess the next day that honestly, it could very well have gone into a pile of stuff that was shredded that I went through everything that I had. I'm going to take it now, but I want to put it away.
Stash it directly. We got public comments left, right?
Yeah. Well, now what's still looking up this year?
Driver's license?
No.
Don't take another loan?
I got a loan. It says driver's license.
We got bank papers to sign and we have warrants to sign. Chuck, have you looked at the warrants or?
Yep.
Okay, you looked at them?
Yep.
Can we have this?
I make a motion to accept the warrants.
Did you also look at the warrants, John, or did you just?
Yeah, I've signed the warrants.
Okay, so that's the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
And we're in the process of signing that right now. All right, we'll just jump us on a little bit and keep rolling. Uh, wastewater, we've discussed that. One to ten acre town transition update, pretty much, you've clarified that, I'm.
Yeah, that was, what I just did earlier was what I was going to do now, so.
So we're good with that. Library project?
We've already done that.
Okay, new business.
Because it wasn't library at all. So the only kind of official new business that, that's not public comment is that when asked, Merrill Bent, as you know, accepted the town's request to fill the role of town attorney. Um, so.
Official.
We need to, I would say, probably a motion officially accepting that. I know that you're in touch with her more than I am. I have not commu, so we need to talk with her more about like, you know, paying her. I'm assuming we've, we're already doing that to some degree with the.
We have, we've got bills for them already, so I guess.
Yeah, so that, but that's good news and she was really excited about it and, well, from what I.
Yeah.
Took, I, I've decided she's very, I've decided she's very excited about it.
Perfect, that's the same, same bye-bye I got, so it's good.
So looking forward to it. Um, that's what I have.
So, somebody want to make a motion that we, that we approve the, how do, how do we want to phrase that, that we hire?
Hire?
Yeah. So Merrill Bent from Wilmington, Bella and Campbell or Wilmington, Matt and Bob will, right?
Yes.
Bob will make that motion. Somebody want to second that motion?
I will.
John will. Any more discussion on that motion?
Whether. Does, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Carried. Great.
Um, so with your permission, I would say that maybe I can estat- I can
Absolutely.
Email her again and just work, maybe work so that we can get her all Whatever you need for financial requirements for now that she's on.
Do you need anything from them for our records or just kinda?
We just pay her if she fills us. Okay.
Julie.
She'll need a ten ninety on her card, just because of the nature of the works that are going to change.
Okay, so maybe I'll just send her an email copying you and.
We supposed to sign back here too?
The words highlighted, yeah. I think we need only one spot for me and they didn't give us enough spots, so I.
So there's four.
And this isn't, this isn't the same as the, the general phone checking, there, I don't think they require two signatures, it's like one signature, but there's multiple signers, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna see, right?
John was the only one that needed to sign that? Are you or?
I, if you look, you need to like fill it out, we didn't have it pre-filled.
How many, how many people needed to?
I think it, we just do John and you as vice in chair and then I'll do one and then we'll be good.
Okay. Let's keep this rolling and, and I'll, I'll come back to this. The handout.
I highly recommend the aforementioned. It's new business. Thank you. Now it's past my head.
You happen to be in my key, you're not my Cinderella.
Pete Rose.
There are five bucks apiece to do each one of those.
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's it, that's it, that's it, all right, so I think we're all, all through everything down to public comment.
Yes.
Eve?
I wanted to, um, mention to the board, you may already know that the library board meets on the, um, first Tuesday of every month. But unfortunately, that means that it often conflicts with the select board meeting.
Uh-huh.
And I was wondering if there's a way for that to, to make it possible so that people could come to both library board meetings and select board meetings and not have to choose.
Uh, short of moving one or the other time, I don't I don't, I don't, she's.
Established at the organizational meeting every year when the Meetings of the select board are.
Yes.
So I would say maybe if the library board adjusted.
I asked. They don't want to do that.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, we're, we're bound, we're bound by this date and time already.
I wasn't suggesting a select change, I was hoping that it could be encouraged, um, I made a request that they consider changing And they said no and didn't really give enough explanation. I, I, I imagine I might not be the only person who would like to attend folks' meetings, so I'm sure there are things are done well before these meetings.
No, that's not true, I've left those meetings many times to come here, I can't leave two places at once in part. I'm not saying they're over at seven, but they're over before nine, I've never left a meeting here and they're still there.
But I can't leave those meetings at once is my point, it would be nice to be able to.
Unfortunately, I mean, we've established this, this has been, you know.
Seven o'clock.
Per hour.
No, I would never suggest changing select order and I just wondered if it could be recommended that they consider.
Consider an option, I, I, honestly, my feeling is, is with this, this Just, just the climate of, of getting the community people involved, if, if they can pick a meeting That, that worked for everybody and you can keep involvement, that's, that's a big plus, even if it conflicts with something else unfortunate. It's unfortunate for you and, and I, I do see that, but. I don't know.
What time does their meeting start?
Six.
They start at six?
Really couldn't go in earlier.
They couldn't really start it any quicker, it wouldn't. I, I'm sorry, but I'm, I do appreciate the fact that you do attend these meetings. Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment tonight? Dolores?
I know that with Hal Wilkinson passing, probably nothing has been done on enforcement on, uh, the Briar Hill. By May progress.
No, that, the, the, the letter has gone out and, and steps are.
I knew that, yeah.
Steps are being taken. Dolores working on it, she's monitoring it and ready to make the next move and.
Well, you know, I just thought there's nobody in place to do the.
Well, the lawyer's handling the ne- the next few moves on that, it's pretty much up to the lawyer to.
I thought she did a, I thought she did a good job.
Okay, yeah.
Was working on that, um, the only other thing was, you know, the parking on Route thirty That, um, By the intersection of Max Store and then the old triangle, um, it's really Uh, some large vehicle that's parked there makes the intersection rather blind.
Where, where Bob Marleano had some input on that, he was able to talk to some people that matter And we're trying to get more activity, Kristen, what can you add?
So I ran into Bob and he just quickly kind of filled me in a little bit and spoke with the District of Transportation, I believe, I can't be quoted directly on that, to which they said that enforcement Now that they've been alerted about it, they are required to look into it. As far as I know, this is again hearsay, a letter was being sent to the property owners Of which, you know, of whom are parking in those sections and areas that are causing issues. So the property owners are going to be alerted again that they are currently parking in no parking zones. And they also suggested that our town constable with the select board's approval and request Could be given permission to issue violations to folks that are parking in no parking zones. Um, apparently in casual conversation with Dave Ricard, he had was You know, he had said that he would be happy to do that if the select board asked him to. That was, thank you for bringing that up, 'cause that was something that
Something that slipped through, didn't it?
Slipped through that I was going to raise. Um, so essentially, the select board does have the opportunity to request that Dave Ricard monitor the no parking zones and I don't, I would have to get some confirmation in, as to what kind of Violations he could issue, whether they be tickets or just warnings or whatever that may be, that I do not know the answer to that, but Something to be done and then on the state level, now that they have been alerted, um, they are obligated to do something about it, which is great.
Somebody must have spoke to the owner of the pickup because that's further down towards the, uh, Steps and the.
Well, I know that's the.
And the bank.
That's the, I believe that's a tenant that's.
Right, but I mean, some, something's been said because he's a lot further.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I believe that this, the places specifically that are in question are the checked out sections on the road, um, on Route thirty.
But I noticed today, when I left here, there were a couple vehicles That were parked across from Max in the no parking area.
So all of, all of which are opportunities to be issued violations to, so we'll have to look into that in term, you know, what that means, but It seems that a request from the select board to have Dave Ricard, you know, pursue this is a really Once we know what his capacity of violation issuing is, could be a really great step in the process.
Well, good job.
Well, it goes to Bob Marley, that's Bob Marley now, I'm just the mouthpiece, so.
Somebody will pay, uh, issue with it on the state level.
So, yeah, there are, there is work being done on it. Long, long story long, people were, yeah, were making strides.
Do we?
Oh.
No.
The, a couple of representatives acknowledged.
Everybody else has to say that too.
Us for, you know, bringing it up. Said they look forward to do- doing something about it.
They're very quick to respond, they were all very quick to respond and senators and Robin and everybody was saying, oh, this is great And thank you for bringing this to our attention and we look forward to working on a resolution. Um, but it seems that Bob's communication, because he had communicated the district of transportation about an entirely separate issue And then this, he came up in conversation.
Signed on the wrong lines, but that's.
The good news is though that by saying something, there's an obligation to do something.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm gonna be asking, it's not going off.
That's me.
Instead of our time going to, maybe I say.
Right there. Probably vice chair.
Okay, so she's the first. All right, so anybody else have anything to Bring up for, under new business? Go ahead.
We'll be back in two weeks, so you can kind of go with some information, I'm sure it'll be quite good.
I will, I will have, I will do my best to get a report from her on where we stand on both of these issues. Before then, thank you. Right? Okay. All right, and so if anybody else has anything else?
Do you need to be all come in?
What's that?
Any appeals? You going with appeals?
Uh, I haven't heard anything Other than, than the one that's in Purhams. That's the only thing I've, that's the only information that I've had on anything, so. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'm making a motion here, John.
Okay, thank you very much.